September 23rd will come to order, please. Rural call, city clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
President.
Mr. Gault.
Present.
Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kaler.
Present. Tonight, we'll have Commissioner Abraham lead us in our invocation and our pledge of allegiance after our invocation is Peyton Craft, and he's in middle school, an 11-year-old in middle school at Mayfield.
Our Father, which art in heaven, we thank you for this day, this beautiful autumn day. We thank you for the opportunities. And, Father, we thank you for the challenges. Look down upon us, and through your Spirit, grant us wisdom, understanding, but grant us the initiative to do what we here in each of our capacities to do. Let us do it with a conviction. Let us do it with a clear conscience. As we gather together, we represent those who we represent. Let your character be consistent with our efforts. These things we ask in your shrew's name. Amen.
Peyton. You can use the microphone here.
You can go right here if you want.
You're right here.
Go.
Right there. Speak now.
Speak now. There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Thank you, Peyton. City manager, any additions or deletions?
We have one addition, Mayor, Resolution A, Paducah Power System, call to action.
Okay, thank you. In case you're wondering what this is, it's not for the person that asked the best question tonight. It's actually this week, and maybe the whole month is Senior Citizens Week, and to show their appreciation to the city of Paducah, they gave us this award today for providing the facility that they use to have their fellowship, to have their meals, and the city of Paducah does provide that location for them as well as the utilities. So, they just, this was their way of thanking us.
Oh, pretty. Very nice.
We have a couple of proclamations tonight. So Peyton Craft and Sarah Wilson Craft, if you'll come forward.
Okay, Peyton and Sarah, from the office of the mayor, a proclamation, whereas hydrocephalus occurs when excess fluid builds up in the brain, most often because of an obstruction preventing proper fluid drainage, and whereas the United States Congress passed a resolution in 2009 designating the month of September as National Hydrocephalus Month, and whereas representatives from the national, regional, state, and local pediatric hydrocephalus foundations, along with leadership, various professional, community, and medical-based organizations are dedicated to increasing public awareness of hydrocephalus, including the need of families with children diagnosed with hydrocephalus. Now therefore, I, Gail Kaler, Mayor of the city of Paducah, to hereby proclaim September Hydrocephalus Awareness Month in Paducah, Kentucky, and ask people of Kentucky to join us in increasing the public awareness of hydrocephalus and the need for support for more effective to address the effects of the disease and find cures or ways to prevent the disease. Would you like to say anything, Sarah?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here today.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to get in here with you? Thank you.
And we have Samantha Williams here with us on Adult Education Week. Are you here, Samantha? Hi.
Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Whereas it is appropriate to promote increasing the educational attainment level of Kentuckians and encouraging qualified residents of Paducah and McCracken County to enroll in free services provided by the McCracken County Adult Education Center, whereas September 22nd through 28th, 2014 is National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, whereas 4,764 adult residents of Paducah and McCracken County lack a high school or GED diploma, whereas an individual who earns a high school or GED diploma earns an average of 9,300 more per year than a high school dropout, whereas an individual who earns a high school or GED diploma can enter post-secondary education, thereby increasing employment opportunities and earning potential, whereas the most effective way to improve the academic success of a child is by improving the educational level of the parent, whereas individuals without a high school credentials are two times as likely to be unemployed, three times as likely to be in poverty, and eight times as likely to be incarcerated, whereas our local economy, economic development, educational attainment efforts are incumbent upon a college and career-ready population, whereas the McCracken County Adult Education Center can assist adults in obtaining a national career readiness certificate, earning a GED diploma, and becoming more college and career-ready. Now therefore, I, Gail Kaler, Mayor of Paducah, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim September 22nd through the 28th, 2014 as Adult Education Week in Paducah, and encourage residents to support the work of the McCracken County Adult Education.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for your support. Just thank you for your support, and we look forward to being able to serve the residents of McCracken County. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a presentation by Prairie State Energy Campus, and I would like to ask everyone tonight that wants to speak, we do have several people that have signed up tonight, I would like to keep it to three minutes per person and not go over 40 minutes with your comments or your questions. So if you haven't signed up, please sign up on the paper outside, and that would help us expedite this. Okay. Dave. We have Dave Clark here tonight with us from Paducah Power, and he's here to introduce from Prairie State. Thank you, Dave.
Mayor Kaler, and members of the city commission, I want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to give this report to you. I was looking through my notes, I think we've done it three times over the years, but we did miss last year, and for that I apologize, and so we appreciate the opportunity this evening to speak to the commission. I have some folks with me from the Prairie State Energy Campus, as you all well know, that's the plant where we get about 75% to 80% of our energy needs, so it affects our health quite a bit, and so we are focused on it, and you'll hear reports. We have three of the senior leaders at the Prairie State Energy Campus, and first, I want to introduce Mark Gurkin. Mark, put your hand up. Mark is the interim CEO and chairman of the board, and there's nine board members, and I'm pleased to serve with Mark on it, and represent KEMPa, which is a, was founded by the Princeton Electric Plant Board and the Paducah Power System. He's also the president and CEO of American Municipal Power, known as AMP, in Columbus, Ohio, and he's one of the largest joint action agencies in the country. Next, I want to introduce Randy Short. Randy is our chief operating officer. He's the number-two man at the plant. We don't have a number-one man at the plant. We're conducting interviews for the new CEO and hope to maybe have a selection made in about a month. So Randy is the number-two man, and he has two decades of experience in the utility industry. We got Randy from the Dynegy Power Plant, known as Baldwin, which is about six miles away from the Prairie State Plant. It's a slightly larger plant, being about 1,800 megawatts, whereas Prairie State's about 1,620. And so Randy has got an extensive background in burning Illinois coal. That's what we burn, that's our fuel supply, so I'm pleased to have him here to report on progress in getting the plant up and operating. Next fellow we have is Paul Cravocouka, known as PK. PK, put your hand up. He's the senior vice president of the mining operation, and directly across the street from the power plant is a mine. It's a mine mouth plant. We own a 30-plus-year coal supply, and all the fuel for the plant is, comes out of that mine, and Paul works about 300 to 400 coal miners contract, and some of them are our own employees. Also have Rick Soderholm here, who's our consultant from Lidos Consulting, known as the old RW Beck. I have Heather Overby, she's the chief financial officer with the Kentucky Municipal Power Agency. I have Andrea Underwood, who handles public relations for us and customers. And I have Hardy Roberts, who's our new chairman, and Hardy, put your hand up. I think everyone knows you're here. So I'm going to pass the mantle over to Mark.
Right.
And get started.
Before you all get started, I just wanted to say something, okay?
Go ahead.
Before you start your presentation. And I would also like to say that we have Mayor Gail Cherry here with us today from Princeton, so welcome, Gail. Sure.
I think the public has three expectations when it comes to power. They want abundant power that's reliable, they want it at an affordable rate, and we have no question that Paducah Power is providing citizens with abundant, reliable power. However, the rates are the community's concern. We're here with, tonight, with a mission to understand and of moving forward, and the changes, I think, that are occurring on the board is going to move us forward, and I think you've got some good ideas, some things that you want to work on. We need to keep moving in that direction. Paducah Power System and representatives of Prairie State Energy Campus are here to help everyone understand the current situation regarding the plant's operation. Paducah Power and Princeton Power are equity owners in Prairie State Energy Campus in Illinois. Prairie State provides Paducah Power with the majority of its power needs. Construction of the plant began in 2007. However, since the plant came online and over the past several months, the plant has not been able to operate at a level that we need. As a result, Paducah Power has had to purchase power on the open market. We all feel the pain of the need to purchase power in the form of power cost adjustments that show up on our bills. I have heard several stories of businesses struggling to keep their doors open, some are considering closing, plus I know that residents are having an extremely hard time paying their bills and having to make hard financial choices. We empathize with you because we are you. I'm there too. The commission is there too, with you. They understand this. We're listening, and we know you want financial relief. So how do we get lower power bills? Simply put, the Prairie State Plant must begin to operate in a reliable, steady manner. So tonight, we have Dave Clark, the general manager of Paducah Power, and three representatives of Prairie State. Thank you for being here. Our goal tonight is to listen, ask pertinent questions, determine whether or when the plant will get to its full operational capacity. So welcome, gentlemen, and we look forward to your presentation.
And I think you'll get some good answers, and I'm going to turn it over to these three gentlemen, and they've got a presentation, a slide presentation they'd like to make. Mike or Mark?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dave, and Mayor and Commissioner. Do you, are we going to just hold questions till they ask? Okay, I appreciate it. I am an ex-city manager, so I do appreciate this whole process. I kind of miss it at times, but it was when I had brown hair and not silver hair, so. What we're going to try to do is update you as much as possible on where the plant is. It's just a quick little overview. Prairie State really is the generator of the baseload electricity for the ownership group, which, as Dave said, is nine individual owners. Between us and KMPA is the wholesale market. All the generation electricity is scheduled through that regional transmission organization, which they call them RTOs. They're independent entities. The electricity in Illinois is scheduled through the MISO as well as the PJM. It goes through transmission lines. We do not own those transmission lines, nor do the owners, and then it gets into the distribution systems of each one of our individual members and each one of the owners. With the exception of Peabody, the developer, they, I believe, sell theirs into the market, they head market. I don't think they have any long-term contracts. Just to give you a snapshot, Prairie State owners serve more than 2.5 million families in eight states, and it just gives you a representative of the nine owners from that. It really is a public-power partnership. It represents, Prairie State represents the investment of Midwest, Midwestern municipals and rural electric cooperatives in stable baseload power. 95% of us are power co-ops or municipals, and 124 megawatts is produced and used by communities in Kentucky, which represents, the whole membership represents about 10% of the public-power ownership. Really what we are is about is, like the mayor said, is reliable, system reliability, improve economics for both economic costs as well as development, and preparing ourselves for inevitable market changes through generation investment. I want to talk a little bit, and I'm not the technical guy, so when we get to some slides, I'm going to punt it to PK or Randy to give you that technical background, but I want to talk a little bit about where we're headed with leadership and reliability, because I think it's very critical. We've had a change in leadership, and we felt we needed to make that change. As Dave was saying, we are under a search right now. In fact, it's my charge to do that as a committee before I became chairman, so I'm very motivated to do a great job, as well as get this person on as soon as possible. We, as Dave said, we are on final interviews on September 30th. I believe strongly that we have some excellent candidates, and based on what I know, we should have this person in the office in Illinois by the first week of November, if things go well. With us, as Dave said, a good explanation of Randy Short, I will tell you that we looked at our org chart, we decided we needed to bring better expertise in from the plant side, from a leadership perspective and the understanding of Illinois coal and how to run these plants. Randy comes with a great background, both on the coal side, not the coal side, but the coal generation fleets, both subcritical and supercritical, so we feel very lucky that we were able to bring him on as fast as we could. PK is vice president of generate, or PK is, excuse me, I should go back. We also have Tom Cordick, and Tom is a, he's one of the ones that came on from the plant early on, has produced a lot for us in the last five months since we've moved him up the ladder and doing well, as well as Ken Pullman, and that was brought over by Randy to bring more expertise in our shop, and so we feel very comfortable from the power generation side right now of where we're at. We have a young workforce, though, and so we started with zero employees. Back when we started construction, we had to hire those. There was a lot of training expertise, and we have a lot more to do, as you'll hear. The other gentleman with me is PK, the senior vice president of the mine. The mine has operated very well, the construction went on without any increases on schedule. The impacts of the mine have been significant from a operational perspective because of the plant being up and down in the production of coal, but we have great leadership on the mine side. And I'll let the folks talk about our campus safety team, but safety is something that we're achieving great comparisons to the national averages. We don't try to compare to national averages. We think we need to be better than the year before and keep improving that. We're going to talk a little bit about reliability, the plant B&amp;V, the monitoring and diagnostic programs, the instrument and control reviews, the power plant projects. I'm going to let these folks talk about each one of these as I go forward, the business systems improvements and the mine enhancement, so as we walk through there, we're going to discuss most of these. The number-one thing that we're concerned on right now is production improvement. I just gave you a snapshot, and what we really talk about is capacity factor. And you hear a lot of acronyms and a lot of EAF and an E4, that type of stuff we're going to show you, but this really is the driver. It's a measure of how often the electric generator runs for a specific period of time. It indicates how much electricity a generator actually produces relative to the maximum it could produce at the continuous full power operation during the same period. And so it's really telling you the measurement of what we're getting out of that plant at the time. And you'll see July 2013 versus July 2014. There's been improvement, but we're not happy with that improvement right now. It's not good enough for us right now, and we'll talk about that. This gives you, and I mentioned EAF, and it's the equivalent availability factor, and that's, is how many hours is those units capable of running. Not that they will run that time, because they are dispatched in the market, but it's how, is that unit capable of operating and how many megawatts? And so that EAF is a measurement, as well as the E4 is a equivalent forced outage. That is an outage that you didn't plan. It was a human trip, it was equipment failure or something like that, but that is a outage that's unexpected. And so those are the measurements that we incentivize this plant at. In fact, if you look at our compensation for both the mine as well as the plant itself, they have a base compensation, but every one of those employees is incented to meet the equivalent availability factor as well as a forced outage factor. So we, and safety and some other environmental measurements as well. But if you look at the bar chart, and I think what's really important is the bottom, it's the August of 2014, the EAF's about 68%, the E4 is 32%. I will tell you that the E4 is a little bit distorted because of where we're at with the plant, but what a good E4, and correct me if I'm wrong, Randy, but when this plant is running the way it should be, is at that 5% level.
That's correct.
Okay? So we have, we have a lot of work, but these folks will explain that a little bit. Year-to-date, this year, is, we've had a little bit less on the forced outage, but we had some outages that were major outages, and that adds to that factor. And then if you look at the aggregate commercial year-to-date, you'll see that the E4 is 25.63 and EF is 65.29%. So, and then the starts and stops is very critical, too. We don't want a lot of starts and stops on this, on these units. That's another measurement. So we know we have a problem, okay? These, I would say that from an owner's perspective, we shouldn't think that this project would have come to 85% availability within the first year. That's just not normal. We're under a spotlight, we have open records and stuff like that, so people can see what our plant's doing. A lot of investor owns have these same type of issues. I'm not saying at this level, but we just don't see them because they're investor owns or they're independent power producers, so they don't have the, disclose those type of things. But we're working on this. This is nothing that we're proud of, but it's the measurement of what it is today. What we want to do is talk a little bit, and I'm going to let these folks talk about it, is what we looked at in next year, our 2015 budget, as well as the 10-year budget out, and I will tell you, we spent a lot of time, this is really a budget put together by the new leadership and the owners, and it's going to talk about, and we're going to show this, we're going to talk about the boxes there, is the startup in '12, the shakedown period in 2013, 2014, the 2015, '16, '17, and where we think we'll be equivalent-wise in our approach on this. I want to, I want to say that the one thing that I want to stress to all of you in here, because I think it's important, because we wanted new leadership, we don't believe that we were having realistic approaches to some of the goals that we were trying to set. And I will tell you, I wouldn't be up here today, talking to you today, if I didn't think that our team back here can't meet those goals and the owners won't support them. So I want to get, Randy, why don't you come on up, and PK can talk, you both can talk and share, share the comments on these boxes.
Okay. As you can see in that first box there, in the startup-shakedown period, which we are currently in, the 2013 to 2014 period, the lost megawatt hours mitigated. What that is, when we have a lost megawatts, we want to know why. We do an analysis of why that happened, and we put plans in place to mitigate it so they don't occur again. We always want to take care of it, get rid of, get that issue taken care of, and get our production up. The next item, I'm going to skip over and let PK talk about that in a minute. The third item is the outage and reliability and maintenance costs. Not only the outages take away the megawatts out of the market, but they also cost a lot of dollars to make the repairs. So anything you can do, we can do to increase that reliability are going to help you twofold, one in the increase in megawatt hours and also in the reliability costs. The fourth item is the boiler asset protection. We want to protect our asset. That boiler is one of our big pieces of that plant, and we cannot let that deteriorate. So we do detailed inspections during scheduled outages, and we see if there's any weak points or places that there's corrosion or erosion going on that we weren't aware of, and we'll spend our dollars on that area that will reduce the forced outages in the future. The second-last item is boiler combustion tuning. When we, when you burn coal, you want to burn out and get all the energy out of the, out of the coal that you can, and you also want it to burn clean for emissions control. So we're, we've hired experts in the area, and they've come in and tuned our boilers and our mills, and it's a constant surveillance on the mills and the boilers. You're always making adjustments. And the last item there is absorber gas flow. That's on our pollution control devices, and that's to monitor our pressure drops across that and make sure they're optimized. I'll let PK talk to the flexed mine labor.
Yes. First, I'd like to say thank you very much for the opportunity to come here and speak to all you, and for all of the constituents that have been a part of the Prairie State project. Thank you for the opportunity, especially from the mine perspective, to build a world-class operation. We believe that we've built the best in the country, and we're going to, we're going to hold to that. Really, talk about the startup activities and around shakedown, the flexing of the labor, the flexing of the labor, really what that means is, is because as the power plant builds up, we have an infrastructure in place, and we're prepared to meet the 6.5 to 7 million tons of production needed when the plant is fully reliable and up and operating. But during that time period, being cognizant of that, we've also taken that opportunity to watch the price, the costs associated with the mine, and so we flex the labor. That means we have a significant portion of the Prairie State labor hired, but we also keep an abundant number of contract labor in place that we can flex up and down based on the reliability, so that we're not obviously spending your money fruitlessly when we're building, when we're going forward with the, with the project. Really, the R&amp;M costs, I know we talked about that for the, for the power plant, but those are associated also with the mine, and of course, us watching very closely those costs and what's going on at the mine on a very regular basis. Maybe I'll move my portion to stabilize the operations since I'm here. Although we are positioned very well at this point and have been, as reliability improves at the plant, we're not just sitting back and just taking that as that's acceptable. at the plant, we're not just sitting back and just taking that as that's acceptable. We've taken on some other strategic initiatives at the mine. We call it a mine enhancement plan. From a reliability program that we have internally with the Prairie State employees and a reliability program that we have with a partnership with one of our major suppliers, we identified some shortcomings in our productivity, production activities. In saying that, we've made some minor adjustments to go ahead and show a 20% to 30% improvement in our feet per MMU shift or feet per mine machine shift in this upcoming year, and we're currently putting those pieces in place to be well-prepared moving into 2015 as the plant moves to its full reliability. Secondary mining, for some of you that have been around through this project, but really what I'd like to say about the secondary mining is that we had a plan in place when we started this mine, using some of the key areas being mined around Prairie State and some other mines that were active. Through that process, we had to go through some requirements, regulatory requirements, and there were some changes to the plans that were forced upon us. That being said, we took the initiative to come up with a secondary plan to be able to try to take a little bit of coal off of the pillars as we pull back out of what we call our panels. What that means to the ownership and what that means, again, to all of you as constituents, is to be able to extend the life of the operation, extend the life of the operation by, and when I say operation, the reserve life of the operation by another year, and also to give some very pure coal product into the power plant, because again, when we talk about reliability, and I'm sure Randy will talk about it, and the boilers, the better the coal we can give to the power plant, the better those boilers are going to operate, and we know that. At Prairie State, at the mine, safety is the core value. That is the number-one core value. What comes after safety is quality, and that's quality of workmanship and quality of product. We've got to get the best quality product into that plant, and that's what's secondary mining. For quadrant mining, really, if you just looked at the overall mine layout of five miles by seven miles of reserves that you all currently control and own for that 30-year period, we looked at that, and we have a lot of construction activities. Think about your house and your plumbing system. Water goes in and water comes out. Same thing with air going into mine and air coming out. And by looking at that system, where we've been able to come up with a new plan with some new sets of eyes, with some technical people looking at it, that we're going to be able to reduce those construction costs going forward, starting about mid-2015. So we're going to see some opportunities with that, with that project going forward. And again, I mentioned safety, but safety is the core value of the project. Safety is where we keep our focus, and we have an outstanding, and you've allowed us to put together an outstanding workforce at Prairie State. So if you want to pick that up from here, Randy?
Sure. The last bullet there, the mission-critical projects, reliability-driven. What we do is, the capital dollars that we're looking for the owner's approval to go forward are those items that improve the plant reliability. Those are the items that the owners are interested in and we're interested in to get the plant reliable. So that's the stabilizing operations from '15 to '17, and then, once we get past that point, '18 to '24, we've got just the performance where we've been in the business for long enough. We know what it takes as far as costs, manpower. Our workforce will, the learning curve will be past us at that point, and it's just day-to-day operations. So we've got our leveraged, safe, and well-trained workforce, stable fuel supply. One of the things that attracted me to Prairie State was the setup there. We've got the mine-mouth plant right across the street. There is no transportation risk or risk from other entities. We have total control over that fuel supply. And the next item is preventive maintenance programs. That's fully developing all the maintenance programs, so we're taking care of our equipment in proper ways, doing the oil changes, those type of things, just like on your car, the tire rotations, oil changes and such. Power plant has the same type of things. Outage scheduling, that's our planned outages. We've learned where the weak points are, that maybe there's some wear items in the plant. So that's where we've got our outage schedules optimized, so we know exactly when we needed to replace certain components. The coal combustion residual strategy, the ash from the plant. We've got a near-field landfill right there on the plant site, and that is where we've landfilled our ash. So that's our strategy. We have another landfill a little further away, but the near-field has saved us a significant amount of money there. Predictable performance and costs, that's where it's known. Our forecasts and our projections will have a good history and where we can predict going forward.
What we want to kind of show is a couple charts, too, and this is the average delivered fuel prices to electric power plants, and this is EIA data, and it shows the coal, the natural gas, and where Prairie State is from a fuel perspective. And I will tell you, we got in this project because of the chief fuel, and it was a mine-mouth plant, so your fuel is fixed going forward. You don't have transportation impacts, and that's one of the big drivers of this. With this fuel, though, as we talk, we're going to talk a little bit, there are things about this fuel that has got to be watched when you burn it. It's very abrasive. It's got high silica, high ash, and so those are things that we knew going in, but they need to be, you have to troubleshoot them as you go through the plant, so we'll talk a little bit about that. The average annual mine-mouth coal prices, and these are, again, EIA data. The U.S. average is shown in the purple, and Prairie State is shown in the green. And so you'll see the significant advantage of the fuel itself. And I'm not sure what the big delta is, but these are data put together by the federal government. The other thing on Prairie State fuel advantage, we're looking at 23 industry actuals, and Potter River Basin is out in Wyoming. It's surface mine. Illinois Basin, obviously, is in our area. Northern Appalachia is more of your West Virginia and your Kentucky areas, and you'll see the significant difference in the dollars in MM-BTU. Our BTU content isn't the highest, but it's, when you look at it from the effective dollars per MM-BTU, it's the most attractive. This is going to give you a snapshot, and I'm going to let Randy walk through this, but the first one on top will show you what we're projecting for 2015, and then the bottom is 2015 through the 10-year snapshot going forward. And I'll let Randy and PK talk a little bit of how we developed this. You're going to notice it says July 9th of 2014, and you're going to see it says August 13th of 2014. That is a lot of work by Prairie State staff with the owners put together a, what we call a expert team. AMP has several people that have coal experience, especially on combustion, Jay Bartlett, Southern Illinois, and they put, we put together what we call an internal team to work with these folks to come back with a realistic schedule. So that's what you see the difference in when we started in July and what we ended up in August, that the board approved. And there were several iterations between that, but that's what, and I'll let them talk about how we shifted some outage work as well, trying to be able to give, deliver a better product, economic product, and reliable product to you now, and put some of the outage work off to the end. So Randy, I'll let you start.
You'll see in that top table, the July 9th projections for equivalent availability factor is 81.9%, which we felt was a realistic number with our outages, outage estimates for forced and our scheduled outages that we had planned. And the E4 forced outage rate at 8%, net capacity factor of 77.8%. And again, the difference between the equivalent availability and the top number 81.9% and the net capacity factor is roughly about 5%, and that's typical. The difference between those two is the time that the plant just isn't in the market, the market price has dipped, and so that's why the capacity factor is a little below what it could have been because the plant was available. And then the net megawatt hour is generated there at 11 million. And then what we did is we challenged ourselves. What can we do to reduce costs, increase megawatts? And what we ended up doing, we had two scheduled outages in 2015, and we actually, one in the fall and one in the spring, and we determined that we could postpone the one in the fall until the spring of 2016, and we really scrutinized, is that the smart thing to do? What components are we planning work on, on the unit during that period? And we felt pretty confident that we could push it off till the next spring. For that, we got equivalent availability factor rise up to 84.7, and also the E4 rate is a little bit higher, 8.9, because you're not doing that work. We felt there's a little bit of risk in there that you may have an increase in forced outage rates, so we estimated that number to be increased a little bit. And the net capacity factor also increased, along with the equivalent availability. With that risk, we decided, we also have a shorter outage, we decided in that unit in the spring, because we wanted to make sure that we have a corrosion issue in our boiler that we mitigated, but we want to make sure that there's not something surprising to us. So in that spring of '15, we're going to go ahead and get that unit that we're postponing the outage. We're going to do some critical inspections just to make sure that there's not anything going on that is unexpected. And then on the out-years from 2015 to 2024, we also adjusted the plans and some outage durations, and you can see the equivalent availability, excuse me, availability factor increased from 86.2 to 86.6, and the E4 rates are close to that 5% target, they're 5.9 and 5.8, and the net capacity factor at 82% going forward.
I want to go back one slide, Randy, and I'll, I guess, several slides. I want to go back to that stabilizing operations when you look at 2015 to 2017. What do you mean by that? There are a lot of things that we will be doing, redundancy. We found out that, boy, if a valve went out, it wasn't built for redundancy, so down the road, it's going to take us a while. We don't want to take outages just to do redundancy. We think we have confidence we're going to prioritize them, but some of that work's going to take that long, so that's why you're seeing those dates right there, okay? That's why we separate the stabilizing. There's a lot of little things that we'd like to do from that perspective, so we're trying to find that. Also, we're finding out a lot of the issues we're having, as Randy said, they're not boiler-related. We got into that 18-month of operation, and we found out that the bearings that we thought were in some of the, say, the conveyors underneath the surface, flight conveyors handling the ash and stuff out of the boilers, we thought they had an 18-month life. We found out they didn't. So we're going to a 12-month life on the bearings because of that, and what we're saying is if that plant outage comes and it's only nine months, you're replacing those bearings anyways because we do want to get the, you know, get the 12 months out of it. So we're being a lot more proactive, but we're finding out, that's where we're finding our stabilization. We're finding issues as we get out there in those years. Randy, do you have any comments on that?
No, and that's one of the things in our outages that we've had recently, in August especially, that stabilizing effort or that shakedown period. We had some longer outages early in the life of the units that prevented us from your normal shakedown periods, and then that's kind of what we're going through now, is in August, we had several outages, but the good thing was, in my view, anyway, was they're all different things. So those are things that you can put plans in place to mitigate them, and then the next thing happened. And now, we're also looking at the single-point-of-failure-type items that Mark mentioned, so we're trying to proactively catch these things before they happen also. We also put, in one of the earlier slides, some alarms in place. So as, we've had thousands and thousands of points that we use to monitor the equipment. Well, we have alarms, but before the alarms, we put a system in that as a point trends up, it alerts you, there may be a problem, there may not be, but at least it gets you looking at it before something happens that forces a piece of equipment offline, and you can do something about it ahead of time to keep the plant available. So we're putting those plans in place, but that's what I wanted to leave you, is that shakedown period, we're still going through it, but the good thing is, it's a lot of different items. We'll get through that, and we're also turning the units around a lot faster, too. When it comes down, we're getting the unit back online to get it back into production quicker as we learn how to operate better all the time.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things that we felt as we made the change, that we didn't feel like when we did have an outage, there was as much urgency as owners wanted. So I think the team we got here recognizes that. This slide here is really a 10-year. We showed you that in an average, but if you want to look at the detail on the bottom, it goes from 2015 to 2024, and it shows you your EAF as well as your forced outage rates, and you'll see where we're trending down to that 5%. You know, for us to put there and say we're going to be at 5% in 2015, 2016, I just, we don't think that's realistic right now. We think those numbers are achievable. We wouldn't be here and giving them to you if we didn't think they were. We put a lot of time in that. This shows the, and I'm going to let PK talk about this one. This is his bread and butter, actually.
I think what you can see overall here is, again, we have a pretty big infrastructure there. So that infrastructure is designed to produce that six-and-a-half million tons, the seven million tons for that 1,600-megawatt plant to produce power for the year. What you can see is we're driven, we're driven with that infrastructure by tons. When we produce the tons, we get the cost. And when the power plant has run at those levels that, and there's been months that that's occurred, when they run at those levels and we produce the 500,000 to 550,000 tons of coal, we see those numbers consistent, what we show you up here. So again, when you look at the, going forward, that consistent fuel cost is achievable. And not only is it achievable, we're, again, we're just not accepting achievable. We're looking for every opportunity to drive that down. We don't consider ourselves acceptable until we find the best reliability of the operation and getting that cost down, and we'll continue to do that. And I mentioned some of those initiatives early, early on. But again, I think it just what it shows you here is, is that the consistent cost of the fuel going forward, and we sincerely believe we can achieve that and have done it in periods of time when we, when we had to do it.
One of the things, too, I would show on this is, the amount of time the coal is on the ground is a big deal, especially with moisture. And so, PK, you can see the fluctuation here. We need to stabilize that production, and when we get to the 85%, the 80%, PK's got an easier job because that coal's coming out per ton, per hour, is consistent. We had, we normally plan for 800,000 to 900,000 tons of coal, whether it's at the mine or at the plant. At one point, we're at 1.3 because we thought two units were coming on. We ramped up the production, it went down. We wanted to protect our labor force, so we had a lot of coal on the ground. Over the Labor Day, that causes you problems if you have a lot of rain. We tried to save some overtime, kept the miners off that Labor Day. We had a lot of rain. We couldn't blend some of that quality dry coal with the wet coal that was on the ground. It doesn't work as well in the boilers and all your feed hoppers and stuff, and so we had to have a D-rate. They're figuring out, they're checking the weather, they're making sure that everything, those are things that are lessons learned. But it's, the significance of the coal is, the coal is within spec, okay? But it does matter how much coal is on the ground and how wet it is and how you use it and blend it, from that perspective. So I think that's, Mayor, that's it. We, I guess, I guess you got questions?
Well, I'm going to ask Dave. I think you've got someone else to introduce, Dave.
Yes, Mayor. I'm going to introduce Rick Soderholm. Rick is the original engineer on this project, started way back in 2002 or '03, you know, we first started looking at getting into a coal project such as Prairie State. And of course, Rick wrote the engineer's report that you need to have when you go to Wall Street to get your financing for a plant of this size. So Rick's been involved with it. He's crunching numbers for years, and so he's our expert that we look to when we have questions about cost, rates, differentials, projections, and so I'm going to ask Rick to come up here and give you a brief report.
Nice to be here. Yeah, as Dave said, the proper pronunciation of our company name now is Lidos, but for years, it was RW Beck. You may have heard of us. This is my 35th year with the combination of those two people.
I, too, had different colored hair when I started.
But in the interest of time, I just want to wrap up everything. As Dave said, I've been involved with this a long time. I've been involved in the markets a long time in this part of the country exclusively. I understand fairly well what's going on here, and, Mayor, you opened very well. Electricity is very high-cost right now. I've also seen a lot of publications, a lot of press, a lot of media reports that compare Paducah with others. I haven't seen them all, but I will say, you know, some of that information is accurate, some of it is not. I don't want to get into that, other than to recognize that, yeah, your rates are higher than they should be. your rates are higher than they should be. And I want to talk about, again, in the interest of time, two things. One is how we can get those rates down, and two, what it's going to look like going forward. And I don't mean 20 years forward, I mean two or three years forward. First thing, as you just heard, I've been involved with Prairie State since the beginning, and I know that they're making every effort to keep costs down. That's an ongoing thing. In everything I read, I thought this quote summed it up very well, and I'm going to change a word when I read it, the reality is this, when Prairie State's strategy succeeds, it will prove to be a wise decision. Not if, because I'm convinced that everything Prairie State's management and staff is doing, that it will operate as designed, and when that happens, your rates that you pay are based on Paducah's costs, the thing that's getting you lately is the power cost adjustment, okay? Now Prairie State's not the only thing that affects the power cost adjustment, but it's the majority of things. So, and I'm not predicting, I don't have any projections for you as to actual, how low we think your rates could go, or when, but I'm very certain that you're at the top of the crest, okay? Now will that power cost ever go away, go all the way down to zero? That's the goal, okay? That's the goal, and that's what everybody's working for. We think it's achievable, not only with Prairie State operating more reliably, but other things that Kempa in particular is doing, Paducah is doing. To give you some examples, Kempa, I work for Kempa as well, we are preparing ourselves to refinance their debt, the 2007 debt, which is a considerable chunk, take advantage of today's interest rates, that savings and interest will pass through directly to you. When they, that may happen, I'm guessing probably next year, maybe 2016, who knows? Depends on the market. Paducah's looking to optimize its peaking and, and its purchase power operations, so is Kempa. All of these things point toward a downward trend in Paducah's rates. Okay, now I don't have an estimate, it depends on so many things, but we're certain that the, the pressure on rates is downward in this system. Now, again, I don't want to get into a comparison specifically with your neighbors, but a lot has been written about, you know, you're 50% higher than JP, or 60% higher than KU. I'm not going to argue with the number, but you are higher, but what is going to impact your relative competitiveness going forward? And very quickly, you heard a lot about fuel price, this is the driving force behind the benefit to you at Prairie State. And for those of you who can't see that, the two big columns are diesel and fuel oil, which really doesn't affect you, natural gas is next, coal prices, I get the information from the same place, and the last two, the next to the last bar is, PK showed you a graph of Prairie State's production cost, which is $1.10, we're right on, in line with that, thankfully. The $1.32 takes into account what you paid to buy the coal and develop the mine, okay? So it includes debt service and reserve costs. That is, in my mind, the true comparison of a delivered fuel price versus a production cost at the mine. And you can see, it's a, what, a third or so of the cost of natural gas, but the benefit going forward to Paducah is that that's not going to change much. There's going to be some inflationary impacts, PK has shown that through production improvements, he can offset that, once the plant starts operating reliably. So this is a big thing, and we're convinced, all of our projections have shown, and some of you have seen them, that going forward, your rates are going to be very, very stable, and this is one of the main reasons. And I could tell you back in 2004, this stable, reliable power was a goal of Paducah Power, and this is one way to achieve it. Other impacts, environmental regulations. You didn't talk much about the, the back end of this power plant, but it is fully compliant, obviously, with all current regulations, it has seven different control systems on it, it's compliant with, I believe, most of the future regulations that we know about, so your exposure to this topic is basically zero. If you look around you, TVA, for example, is spending billions of dollars, and KU is as well, to comply with the regulations that are coming. You don't have that risk. Aging resources and replacement capacity, obviously, this plant is brand new. TVA, for example, just retired 14 coal units, KU is about to do the same thing, all of that is going to make their rates go up. TVA's budget for, for the next few years is $10 billion in new construction. And finally, load retention. TVA lost a big load, Big Rivers, I'm sure many of you know, lost two smelters, they had a very large rate increase recently, they have another one pending. So what we're seeing here is downward pressure on Paducah, upward pressure on your neighbors, which will only help your competitive position. Will it make you the lowest in the, in the state? No. Will it make you competitive going forward? We believe so. And finally, what does Paducah Power have to offer? I read a question that was raised, you know, you can offer incentive rates, but what do you do after the incentive period runs out? Well, here's what you have, just to recap, all of your resource, this is a brand new, your peaking plant, they've all been built in this decade, they're all environmentally compliant. Again, the known fuel source, you don't have to worry about transportation, you don't have to worry about market prices, and we know what it's going to cost. There are two interconnections in this community, one to TVA and one to KU, that's very rare. You have in-town backup generation, as you know, so to a potential industry, reliability is often as important or more important than price, you have that to offer. Again, once things stabilize, we believe you will have competitive, maybe not the lowest, but certainly the gap is closing. Now, I know that doesn't do anything to, to, to correct, excuse me, to correct what you paid in the winter, you know, I don't like my rates, I live in Indiana, in Indianapolis, and I could tell you what I pay for electricity is about seven cents, okay? We don't like it either, and in the wintertime, I use a lot of electricity, but, you know, but ours are going to go up, we know it. Yours, I believe, are going to come down, how low? It's very hard to say, but we're all working to, to make that happen, and this is what I believe you have to offer to, to your residents, and once we get through the shakedown period, I think it'll happen. And finally, little exposure to future rates. I don't see Paducah building anything, or retiring anything, or changing its fuel source for the next 30 years. I mean, you're there, we just got to get through it, and we're, we're very confident that, that a stable rate, residential rate is in your future, and we're working hard to get to that point. So, thank you for your time. That concludes.
Mayor, I think that pretty much concludes, I think Chairman Roberts might have a couple of words to wrap things up, but otherwise, are there any questions from the commissioners that we could address at this time?
Does Chairman Roberts want to speak first, then we'll have some questions?
Wanted to thank Prairie State for the presentation, it's nice to hear some good news for a while from Prairie State. My position with the, or our position, I should say, with the board here is, as I said at the meeting yesterday, we're looking for Prairie State to sell itself to us again, and this is, this is their first shot. Thank you.
Okay, I've got, I've got a few questions, mainly to, to direct toward Prairie State, and, you know, Rick, you talked, you talked about TVA and Paducah Power, Rick, right? Yeah, TVA and Paducah Power, and the big difference between TVA and Paducah Power is Paducah Power has about 25,000 ratepayers, right, right around there?
How many?
How many?
23,000.
23,000 ratepayers. TVA has several million ratepayers, so the cost to our ratepayers is significantly higher per person than TVA debt service. So ours, you know, are paying about 30,000 per person in debt service, TVA about three. So what, what do you say to that?
That's certainly true, the concept of, of that, of that statement. On the, on the flip side, I would say that TVA ratepayers are paying a lot more for fuel than you're paying for fuel. And again, without getting into specifics, TVA just announced a rate decrease that goes into effect next week, and if you look at what other distributors in this area are paying, what their base electric rates are, they're very, very comparable to what Paducah's are if the PCA goes away. So it's very complicated how you take costs and allocate them, and it has to do with a lot of things, but we're showing, TVA, you, you should be very competitive with where you would have been in a very short time, provided we can get that PCA to go down. And then going forward, we think it's going to stay there, we can't say the same, they're looking at another 10, 10 billion in either debt or rate relief, or rate raising, to pay for what they need to do just to keep running, so. But yes, I, I understand the point.
And you know, as I used to tell my daughter, I don't care what your friends are doing, I only care what you're doing.
Absolutely.
And that's the way I feel about our situation here in Paducah. I don't care what TVA's doing, I only care what's happening here in Paducah to our ratepayers, and you all have to be held accountable.
Absolutely.
And I heard you talk a lot about ways to operate at cost savings to Prairie State, but I didn't really hear you say much about saving our ratepayers money, you know, maybe in a couple of years, maybe in three years. But is the plant set at full load, to run at full load, or is it being cycled to handle less than the baseload? That's one of my questions.
As estimates showed on the net capacity factor and the equivalent availability factor, that 5% different, that's the 5% where we're not at, we're at full capability except for that 5, and that's usually, you know, in the off-peak period, which is midnight to 6:00 AM is the off-peak. So that's your typical down, but otherwise, unless there's an equipment issue, we're running at full load.
And probably most of the people here in the audience are like me, they're civilians, you know, they don't really know all the technical part, understand all of it, it's, I've, I've had to learn a lot in a short time. But tell me about the issues of the ash sticking to the boilers. I hear that, I hear about that a lot, tell me about that.
Well, the coal we burn is unwashed, and it has a high ash content, so there's a large volume of ash, along with the coal that goes through the boiler, and when it's in there, it's, it sticks to the surfaces called slag or fouling, and we have devices called soot blowers that, that run in the boiler and knock that slag off, and then into hoppers where we collect it and dispose of it. When, and the initial design of the boiler didn't have all the soot blowers necessary, and we've installed additional soot blowers in areas to keep it clean, and that's been a success so far. One of the, a lot of the outages early on were, were actually caused by some of these soot blowing devices, because of the steam that's used to clean off the surfaces, it had too much water in it, and it actually eroded the tube along with knocking the ash off. We've since made a modification and pulled steam off from a different source, which should mitigate that erosion and reduce our forced outages, especially due to the soot blower erosion, and also keeping the tubes clean. So that's kind of one of those learning curves that we've went through.
I would say, too, that at one point, we would put more observation ports in, so we could see what was going on inside the boiler, as well as some, some cameras, so we're trying to look at that, because the, the ash content and, and the coal itself, we knew that there was going to be high ash, but we're dealing with a lot, a little bit higher ash than we had estimated from day one. So we're looking at ways of how we get better quality, blend that coal, because we're working off of an old pile, too, so a lot of that's affecting us as we go forward, too. So I mean, we, we've learned a lot with soot blowers, we've, we've put inspection ports in, I, I think we're finally getting that, where you tune a boiler and you get optimal combustion, and then you've got your soot blowers working, you've got good water chemistry, all that has to come together, and if one of them's out of line, if the soot, if the steam quality's not there, you get, you, you can get corrosion and erosion in your boiler, so, and that's coming from an office. But, so we are, we're, we've made a lot of those improvements already, it's just tweaking and getting better knowledge and, and better understanding of those things, so.
Okay, and do, does Prairie State report to NERC with a GAD report? Do you do that annually?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and we can get that annual report?
It's, it's public information.
And what has been the change in the power production cost? And you may have had it on your report, but...
Change, I guess I'm...
In other words, like a financial pro forma?
How has it materialized compared to what was projected?
Um, I guess the, well, it, it depends on when you were looking at the projection. I think if you look at the, the cost of the plant when we, we took it over, I think if it was, I mean, basically, it's, it's tough to, to tell you that, because, but I'll put it in perspective, the first year, about a first year, the first 18 months, that plant should run at 77%, okay? The capacity factor, that's the national average, okay? Depending on the plant, the size of plant, a lot of that can change, but that's, that's, that's a trend. We weren't there, I showed you those screens that were 67% in '14, or '13? So we were underperforming there, okay? You would never get to, if we forecasted 85%, that's a bad forecast, that, no plant, no coal plant, no new coal plant is going to reach 85% that first 12 to 18 months. It just takes time to get through some of these bugs. So I would tell you, you're probably, I, I, I got to be careful here, because I'm not sure I know the number, I can, we can give you that, okay? It's, but that's, that's what you got to look at, is when should it been performing at, at 85? And then, you know, that should be about this time, or about six months later, but it's going to be, you know, it's going to be in '15, so, so it's probably 30 bucks, okay?
With the contract that we have with Prairie State, even at 85%, it's not going to really give us a lot of relief.
Mayor, that could get the...
I'm not sure what you're...
...off adjustment in our rate schedule, very close to zero. I consider 85% if A is excellent, B, C, D, E, 85% to me, if the plant operates, that, that's a D, but if we can get a D, Rick Soderholm has done our, our budget numbers, and that should bring in a PCA close to zero. So we don't have far to go to get there, and I want to emphasize that, you know? If we can get up to the A level, we'll probably be talking about cutting rates.
Do you all ever see that happening? Getting it up to an A rating?
I believe we can get, in other words, can we get up to a 90% plus land availability factor?
Our, in the slideshow, it had our projections factors, there are projections in there, I think our, I'd have to go back and look, but I think our highest was in the 80s as far as equivalent availability factor.
Okay.
When this...
And Commissioners, you just go around and start with you, Commissioner Abraham.
So when this was marketed out to municipals, you talked about the, the 85% getting the facility up, I'm just a common sense, trying to, trying to figure this out, I'm pretty sure that's where it was marketed. I mean, if you come in to me and you're telling me that if I, if I come in with you boys that this plant's going to operate at 85% capacity, therefore my rates for my, for my constituents will be low. I mean, or did you say, well, if you come with me in about five years, those rates will be where you can offer savings to your, to you, but it's going to take us about five years to get that up?
The individual owners did their own review and performance, so I'm not, I'm not sure what you guys...
So my question is to the wrong fellow.
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, Mark is absolutely right, I'm not sure what was marketed to Paducah initially.
Who did the marketing?
Peabody.
Is Peabody in the house? Are they here?
No. But I do know that what, once Paducah decided to review participation in the project, they brought in folks like us. Mark did the same thing, every owner did the same thing, and we assigned our own expected long-term availability factors to our analysis. It, and it was always, as Mark said, always lower in the first year or two. Was it five years to get there? No, I don't remember the number, but this has taken longer than we expected, based on...
Same question.
As I recall, when we went into this project, you know, things have changed, two things changed fundamentally since the project was started and construction in the fall of 2007. It took about six years. Number one, you had the advent of fracked gas come on big time, which stood the wholesale power markets on its head. And two, you had the economy meltdown. We had the biggest economic recession since the Great Depression, six and a half million people lost their jobs. We're still not out of it yet, as far as I'm concerned. But as far as this plant goes, we originally had a projection that when we come on and we got through the shakedown phase, we would have rates that would be competitive with our former power supplier, TVA. That was our goal. We never said we're gonna be cheaper, but we wanted to be competitive with them. That means you get within just a few percentage points, you may be 2%, 3% higher, or 2%, 3% lower, you're considered competitive.
So you figured what, how many, how long would it take? Did that...
Well, we figured we'd be there now, but unfortunately, as you've heard these gentlemen say, we've been on this plant, working on it for two years, and we're still not quite there yet. I'm hopeful, maybe in the coming months, that we'll make some good progress.
I have some more questions, but I don't want to monopolize it right now, any of you guys.
Commissioner Gault, do you want to just take it around the table?
Well, Mr. Clark, one of the things I continually hear is, now that the rates are where they are, what are you doing to cost cut measures so that they won't continue to go up? If the plant doesn't start operating, what can we do? Where are we now? And it...
That's a difficult question, you know? We didn't announce that if we cut everyone's salary to zero and gave no benefits, how much would that cut our budget? And it was less than 9%. Because all of our budget, just about, is wholesale power cost. So that's why we're heavily dependent on getting Prairie State, you know, stabilize and get up to at least 85% reliability factor, plant availability factor.
So does that mean that you have no plans to make any cost savings in your own...
Oh, we've made quite a few.
You haven't heard of them?
Well, Andrea maybe can answer that, because we withdrew a lot, we don't sponsor a lot of events anymore, we've got out of that. We didn't, we suspended our coal pay for employees this year. We've cut out a lot of travel unnecessary, you know, that we felt unless there were, it was good training that we needed, you know, we've cut back on travel. But these things are drops in the bucket, folks, when you gotta look at the cost of wholesale power.
I understand.
It's just the nature of the beast.
There was a significant reduction in overtime and spending of capital.
Need to get the story out.
Commissioner Wilson?
You all said individual owners did their own pro forma. What was marketed to Paducah? Did you, I still don't have that answer.
I didn't market anything to Paducah.
Peabody Coal did, but I'm asking David, what was marketed to PPS?
I thought you were talking to the end.
Well, we, for several years before construction was ever started and we pulled the trigger to get into this project, there was development committee meetings that, at Peabody's headquarters. And the development committee was, the plans, blueprints, you could call it for the plant, were being drawn up, things were being looked at, cost analyzed and whatnot. And we've paid our ongoing share of those development costs. Originally, the project was gonna be owned by Peabody, 53%, and they would control it. We would simply, maybe when it was under construction, go for a tour now and then, and they'd hand us our share of the cost, and we'd write a check. They would have control of the project since they're majority owners. They did change CEOs at Peabody, and they decided they didn't want to go into power plant construction, so they, under the contract, they had the right to go down to 10% participation, which they did, so they sold additional shares. And Mark, I think that's how you got in on that, was, Mark's the largest owner, having a little over, what, 22, 23%?
Twenty-two.
Well, let me just cut to the chase though, but do you feel like you were misled by them?
No, no, not at all.
Where we are today is where you were led to believe we would be?
No, we have set up here, the only reason we're not there, Commissioner, is for the simple reason we haven't got the plant stabilized, we haven't got the reliability up to 85%. And that's why we're not there.
But you, were you told you would be at 85% by this time?
Yes, we felt, honestly felt, we would be at the 85%.
And that's what they told you?
Not Peabody, that was our own consultants. That was our own work.
Do you think those consultants misled you?
No.
And I have a question, I'm...
Sorry, I don't...
Go ahead. I'm just saying though, if they told you we would be at 85% and we're not, we're far from it, from what it sounds like, it sounds like to me you were misled.
No, not, I mean, it was put to us, no one could guarantee it. It's just like you come to me and ask me how much snow we're gonna have this December. I can't answer that. I can say I got enough salt stocked up, stockpiled to handle 90% of the contingencies that we may have in December, but I can't, I just don't know.
Let me shed a little, you know, and I'm speaking in generalities, okay? So it's not specific Paducah or anything. The one thing that, the uncertainty on any of these projects is, is two things. You have construction risk. In your study, in your pro forma that went, that should have been addressed, okay? Now, with that said, you also have, any, Peabody, anybody who looked at this plant knew the national trend was, and you looked at the experience, that this plant would run at 85% or above, once it got through the shakedown, the commissioning shakedown. What I think this plant experienced was a lot of, a lot of little moving parts. I think that the plant from day one was managed and the coal, the way we handled the ash, we were challenged. We had more ash than we thought, okay? And you just have to work through that. But that caused a lot of problems early on. And as we got through it and got smarter, we figured that out, but it took a while. One of the other things that I will tell you, that the contract that we had with Bechtel, it wasn't a bad contract as far as, it was a contract, but it had a performance, a hundred hour performance test on each unit, okay? And then they could leave, okay? Well, that's the contract. We probably would have been better off if we could have sustained that project for another, you know, two months of operation before we just got rid of them. That was something that was in the contract. It wasn't illegal, it was in a contract. Nobody foresaw that from an owner's perspective, okay? So, you know, those are just little things that when you look back, I'm just saying, I look back and say, boy, I wish I could have done that different, okay? But it doesn't mean anybody misled us, is what I'm trying to say.
Was the equipment that was purchased, the right equipment for this type of coal?
The only, the only equipment that was purchased that had to technically be modified was the boilers. They were bought from TXU, Texas.
That's the manufacturer?
No, that's the utility, TXU's a utility in Texas.
Who's the manufacturer?
BMW was the manufacturer. They were set up to burn lignite, which is a different coal. BMW, Burns and Mack, Bechtel and everybody worked through the modifications required to be able to burn this coal. So I would tell you, we purchased modified units at a price, a discounted price. We had to design modification them before we took them and put them in the units. So technically, they were designed to handle this coal and this spec. That's the way they were redesigned, so...
They were designed through modification? Were they considered used equipment?
No, they weren't. They were not used equipment.
It was the equipment for one type of coal, modified to address the kind of coal...
They were the right size, the right sized boilers for our units, and they were modified with the approval of BMW, with Burns and Mack as an engineer, with Bechtel looking at it, okay? And so, you know, they were modified. And they're working, but there is things we had to work through. But that was, be the only equipment that would be, would have been modified, okay?
Can I ask one more? You talked about the 2.5 million customers that are serviced by Prairie State. Are they all in the same type of situation that we are in Paducah?
I don't know how to answer that, I'll take a stab at it. Some of the owners are, are project specific. In other words, for instance, AMP, Mark's organization, when he builds a solar plant or a hydro plant or a Prairie State or a combined cycle plant, and they have all of these, they send contracts out, and you open them up and you fill out the amount of that plant that you want. And you obligate yourself with a take or pay contract to pay for that. And when he gets these done, he goes, gets financing, gets the projects built. So if you're a member and you took too much of a solar plant or a hydro or something, you maybe have some financial heartache to get through, you know, your customer's gonna have higher rates. Some of them are, are like TVA, they're all requirements, like the Illinois group, they're not here this evening, but the IMEA. You join, they supply all your power, and they have a variety, so you get a kind of a slice of each different project that they're in. And so they get a blended cost. There is some protection in that, I will grant you. When we left TVA, we were in such an organization, we were responsible for several hundred million dollars of their $30 billion debt, and we had no control over it. We had no say how it was operated or marketed or anything. So that's the types of organizations, that's how these municipalities and cooperatives handle their projects.
I really don't understand if they are or aren't, but I guess it just depends on the community.
It depends on, I've got 130 communities, I got almost 70 in this project, they're all different. Some took more percentage-wise of their, I look at, I look at our portfolio and our members as a resource. There's this resource, that resource, this resource, and it just depends on what your appetite for a specific type of resource is. And a lot of that's controlled back home, within the communities. And so it varies. We have certain parameters that we recommend to our members, okay? They have their own consultants. And so we do, when we do our projects, we do a beneficial use analysis for each one of our members to demonstrate that they can use that size of capacity in this project in their portfolio. So everybody does it differently.
All right, question. Dave, you brought this up. Explain to me or to the audience or all of us, the difference between take and pay, take or pay, and why of the 230 communities, about 82 are one, one type, and the rest are something else? Why are there two kinds of contracts? What are those kinds of contracts and why you have some who took one and some who took the other? So if you'll start by, wasn't any, or whoever wants to jump in. Take and pay versus take or pay, and why some communities chose... It's not that...
Well, in public power, I'm not talking co-ops now, because they finance differently. But in public power, to get good rates from the rating agencies and investors, you do a take or pay contract. That contract obligates each community, the electric, the electric systems and the communities, to pay for that project regardless if it operates or not.
Wait, is it take or pay or...
That's take or, take or pay.
Okay.
All right?
So you're paying for, you're paying for the plant as well as the generated electricity?
You are paying for any debt that is incurred in that project, you're obligated to.
Plant or electricity?
Take and pay means that I have a contract with you, Mayor, and you are only gonna pay me for what I produce. So if I'm only paying, if, you know, if I'm only producing so much, you're only buying that many megawatts, okay? That's the difference.
So, so in other words, take or pay means I'm gonna buy part of a plant and part of electricity the plant produces?
You get the output from, you buy the plant, you're obligated for all debt retirement, and in turn, you get your share of the electricity produced out of it.
Or I could buy, not buy the plant, just buy what the plant produces, i.e. the electricity.
Which would be a higher price.
Okay, all right, now, and then my question is, is that of the 230 some odd communities, 82 of them were take and pay?
I don't know that for a fact, so I don't, I don't know who they are or what they are. Are they co-ops?
But some, but the vast, some took take or pay and some took take and pay. Obviously, the ones that took take and pay where they only are responsible for their electricity only, seems to me like they would have a little less burden because they're not buying part of the plant. You going to speak to that?
I don't, I don't know that for a fact. I don't know what that contract said. So, somebody had to take the obligation of the debt.
Okay.
So it could have been, not the community, it could have been the agency or the lead person, I'm not sure. I can't, I can't answer that.
Can anybody answer that? Take or pay or take and pay? Am I wrong?
Well, Mr. Clark, I mean, what, what contract?
We have a take, we have a take or pay.
Okay, so fully understanding that if it wasn't producing any...
We still gotta pay.
Still had to pay.
Still have to pay, because you're an owner, you're an equity owner.
Which is not uncommon in a public power bond deal. It's not uncommon.
So that's what, that's what your consultants recommended?
But why would...
They didn't recommend it, that's the only way you can go. I mean, if you're gonna go to Wall Street and borrow money from bondholders, they want a secure obligation. They're not gonna take well, if the plant runs well, you will get paid and make money. No, they want to know that they're, they want a lead pipe sense.
Well, what I'm saying is, if you, you know, you had, you're not an expert in that part of it.
No, I'm not.
But, so you have a person that's working with you as your eyes out there, so you got two contracts. And you're looking through the contracts, and you got one, take or pay, or take and pay, and you're looking at this guy, and he's telling you, well, I recommend you go with this one. Didn't it happen that way?
No, no, all we had was a take, take or pay. There was no, we weren't shown, here's your choice, take...
Oh, but there was a choice.
There was, the choice was...
Apparently, there was.
Take or pay is the choice.
There's an and in there, there's a take and pay and a take or pay, but you're saying you only got, you only, you just took what was given to you.
That's the only thing you could do, as he said, that's the only way we could get financing is a take or pay contract.
Well, how is it the Illinois Municipal Electric Agency, that says take and pay, as does, well, I mean, some do, some don't?
I can tell, I can answer that, because they're, I believe they are all requirements, not project-based. So Illinois, as an agency, takes all their costs for all their resources on everything, and they put it in a basket, and then they divvy out the cost, average cost out to them, and that's what, that's why they're doing a take and pay probably. I think, Indiana probably does the same thing. Okay, there you go. There's your answer.
But it would seem that if you only have to pay for what you need, for electricity you contract...
But you gotta go deeper, you gotta see what the obligation of the agency and their ownership is, because they are obligated. Because Indiana and Illinois don't have the debt recovery through customers, so there is a mechanism that ties them to that debt recovery. It's just called a different thing, that's all. They're structured different.
I think I've taken a knife to a gunfight. I'm not an engineer.
No, I'm just, you have to, you're looking at two different, there's different agencies.
And that's my point, is that we're living two different things, two different types of contracts, and I guess I'm, why would Prairie State have two kinds of contracts?
Prairie State does not have two different contracts. No, they don't. Prairie State has one direct contract. They're all the same.
Doesn't mean like they got two separate contracts.
No, they're not.
That's okay.
Okay, I mean, Prairie State does not. The individual owners could have different contract structures, is what I'm trying to say. Prairie State only has one, we all signed the same contract. Trust me, I was the last one in.
Yeah.
Okay?
And you had a take or pay.
Yes, but I was the last one in. I had the same contract that everybody else signed. In fact, I paid a little bit more for the coal, okay? But that's, that's the difference.
I'm just asking.
No, I know, I understand, but I just want to make sure you understand, it's not Peabody. That contract is the same for all nine owners, okay?
Okay.
The different, the structure difference you're talking about is between certain owners and their members. That could be take or pay or take and pay. It depends on how they're structured. Some agencies are all requirements, and that's the difference. We're not. We sign up individual members for each project. If... If Illinois gets into a project, all their members are obligated to get in, okay? They say they're getting in, and they decide to decide what the need is. They can't, they can't come out, they gotta be in. That's the difference.
Minister Gault, you had a question?
I do have one question for Mr. Sotterholm. I wrote down, I kinda hung on this. You said, yes, your rates are higher than they should be, and very certain we are at the top of the crest. I was a little confused about your rates and we. And your company, Lidos, or Lidos Engineering, who exactly do you and/or your company work for? Who are your contracts with, and who are you employed by? Who's the "we," and who's the "you"?
Yeah, I misspoke there. We, well, we work for KNPA, Paducah Power, and Princeton, as well as, obviously, many other clients in the region.
But, but your contract is with KNPA?
One of them is, yes.
Are you contracted with any others in this group?
They do modeling for us, Lidos, and Pran.
Okay.
At Paducah, as well.
And Paducah separately, as well?
Uh huh.
Okay.
And we do design work for Paducah, for example, substation work, as well as consulting work, engineering work. And same thing for Princeton.
Okay.
But we have probably 40,000 clients.
Well, I was just trying to figure that out, within this group, and-
No, he doesn't work for us, but the firm does.
Others within my firm.
The modeling groups.
Okay.
I just wanna say, I appreciate your presentation, and all the charts compiled. I've been trying to follow all the acronyms, and all the projections for the future. I appreciate you saying that we're gonna get to a stable rate. But to me, a stable rate doesn't mean lower. It just means it's gonna be stable, and it could be stable at a high rate. I'm not hearing an answer about what kind of relief we're gonna have for our citizens and businesses in Paducah, and the other cities that are impacted by this.
I'm not gonna talk about what Paducah's gonna do for you. I can assure you what Prairie State is trying to do, and the owners are trying to do. We will get this plant running to where it belongs. From that point, we're gonna drive the membership that Prairie State management to look at ways of keeping, driving these costs down, or keeping them levelized as markets go up, on efficiencies in coal, and even staffing. When we look at this, it's taken a whole lot of staff to get where we're at today. And we'll look at that, once we stabilize this thing, and we're going forward, and we're not spending tons of time trying to do redundancies, and stabilizing in that 15-period, 16-period of new valves, or something. We're gonna look at ways of driving our costs down. Because we think there's optimization there.
I don't think we can wait till 15 or 16.
No, what I'm saying, though, is, going forward, we're also gonna try to look at ways of driving that cost down. It's not just short-term. We think we can get there, so, we're trying. I mean, we're, the owners are committed to this thing. We are, we, we're not happy. I can tell you that. My owners aren't happy. We're pushing, so, and these guys are very talented people. And we'll get there. It needed leadership change, I'm gonna be honest with you. So, and we're gonna, I wouldn't be standing here in front of you if I didn't think this, okay? So, and I appreciate the opportunity to do it, so.
And we'd like, we really would like for you to come back periodically, and give us an update.
Or my replacement?
And I will say this, too, and I, I think that's part of it, is, you can blame me for showing up, but I felt that we needed to at least be out here and tell the Prairie State story. They can, everybody can talk what's going on, but we gotta tell our owners what the story is, and that's our obligation. So we changed the way we're doing a few things. I know I couldn't answer all your questions, and there's questions out there that I can't answer, because of, we got competitive markets. We can't tell everything that we know, because the competitors get it, and they're gonna use it against us when you go buy replacement power for outages, or things like that. So we've gotta be careful what we say. But we're committed to this plant, and we're trying to be as transparent as possible, okay? Thank you.
Well, I just, I just wanna thank you all, also, but I want you to look out at the audience, and these are people that are depending on you to get those power rates down for them. I mean, you're the one that holds our future, and that's a big responsibility.
We will try our best.
Thank you. So we have, we have a few comments. Dave, did you wanna say something?
No, I just wanted to thank you, Mayor, for giving us the opportunity to come here. As Mark said, we owe our owners an explanation, and that's why we're here tonight, to provide that. And we just don't want negative information and floating around. And I know myself, I've been, someone asked me if I was on the board of Peabody Coal. Well, if I was, I'd have an office conflict of interest. But I'm not on the board of Peabody Coal. I never was, and never will be, I'm sure. We do sit on the Prairie State Board as owners to represent ourselves, because we're an equity owner in the plan. We want, we're aligned with everyone here. We want it to perform, and give us the good things that we think is gonna accrue from our being in this project. And so we're looking for that.
And Dave, I do hear criticism of you being on the Prairie State Board, but that's not unusual for the general managers of the different groups to be on the board.
No, all the people on the management committee are like Mark here, and myself, and they're the general managers of their agencies, and they also appoint an alternate.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we have, as I said, I'm gonna allow three minutes per person, and I don't think we have, we'll have to go over that time. The first one here-
You call, can they be seated?
Sure, you all can have a seat. All of these are about Paducah Power System, except one. So we have here Gail Frye and Ken Frye. If you'll come forward, please.
Hope you can see me above there.
And you live, Gail, on-
On Briarwood. I am a consumer of Paducah Power.
Right.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. I have done a lot of power poise, yours was excellent. The bad thing is, and I'll say bad, because we're all here because we're very upset about the rates, is that it's if you were speaking to a lot of engineers, or a lot of people who technically understand. When I listened to you, I felt like I was listening to a philandering husband, or a wife, who had been caught cheating. And all that you were doing was explaining why you were not producing. And your capacity, it seems like, that you went into business with us, and contracted with us to produce a product that you cannot produce. And that is extremely frustrating. The other issue I have is that I haven't heard anything. I know that you're terribly sorry, but there's nothing that's going to happen to any of you because of this. We have businesses that are struggling desperately. We have, I'm a small business owner with my husband. The rates do not affect what I produce, but it affects the ability of people to buy what I sell. And that, in turn, affects every one of the people in this audit, is the people that didn't come. I'm not hearing anything from you that you're saying, I believe we can, we're really gonna try, and, Mayor, there is nothing, we don't have any way to prod these people, to do something about the rates. I feel like that we're helpless. And that goes back to the contract that was evidently signed. And the consultant that advised us to sign a contract that I, listening to what each of you have said, sounds like a bad deal to me. I know when I was with the city, we did contracts. There was always an "out." Someone had to produce. You had to give the product, or there was a penalty. If, if one of our contractors did not get a Pacific street-ready, or my park-ready on time, they had to pay a penalty. Where is the penalty? What is the incentive for Prairie State to reduce these rates? Are you gonna give us a rebate? Any rebate here, because you're not in production?
I don't think that was in the contract.
I know it wasn't in the contract. Thank you, Richard. Somebody did not watch that contract, did they? So, but that's a separate issue, and I hope that the city will be very careful now, who they point boards, and how you review contracts. This could absolutely strangle the city of Paducah. It's not good for business. But it's not just business, it's the people out there that are trying desperately to pay these rates. When I got my bill today, I was not a happy camper. But I can pay it. There are many people out there that are going to either have to pay their power bill, or not eat, or not buy clothing. That is unacceptable. And all you're saying is that, I believe we can do it, we're really gonna try, we're changing leadership. Gentlemen, that's not enough. Mayor, what can the city do to entice something to happen? I mean, I know Batavia, Illinois, did a class action, not the city, but several residents, for misrepresentation of what Prairie State could perform, and how they could, and how they could provide the service. If you can't provide the service, and we have to go out on the market, is this what is happening? And we're buying at huge rates, because we're not, we're not in a position to do anything else? That was a very, that's a poor contract. But also, do we have anything? Do we have a carrot on the stick? Do we have anything that we can do?
We're looking into all that.
Okay, very good. I'm sure I'm over my three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. You were very brave to come.
Okay, we have Sue Reed, and she lives at 2837 Washington.
I'm going to give up my three minutes, please. I think she said just about one other minute.
Okay, thank you, Sue. Okay, our next one is Mark Bryant.
Hey, Mark.
He's timing you.
Yes, sir, Rhodes, thank you. First, I wanna thank all of you for, obviously, doing your homework, because those were some tough questions you all were asking, in all seriousness, because this is very, very complicated. I have three questions, and I'm gonna do it quickly, because I know you want it done. Whoever wants to answer this, if that Prairie State plant was originally to be a $1.8 billion plant, running at 85% capacity, the power rates, I believe now, would be able to go down, but with a fixed cost over $5 billion, is there ever a time when Prairie State can deliver power at an affordable price? Anybody can answer it?
Well, first, I think the $1.8 billion figure is incorrect. Rick, what was the cost you had associated with-
He's over here.
The cost you had associated with the project when we first went in and made the decision in 2007? I think it was $2.97 billion, or something like that.
In 2007, when you financed, when you kept the finance for the first time, the total solid cost was just under $4 billion.
Uh huh, okay, then I'll get to the next question shortly. My next question is, I have received information that Paducah Power has $32 million in assets, and about $600 million in debt. Why don't we immediately bankrupt this company, and start getting our rates down quickly? Anybody wanna answer that? How would that affect this whole domino theory up there? All right. Now, the other question that I have, yesterday, Ray McLennan, who was the former chairman of the Board of Paducah Power System, and Onkempa, sent this email out to the mayor and the city commissioners. And he said, "The one big decision Prairie State made was to turn down a fixed-price bid from FLUR for $3.5 billion. They felt that Bechtel could build it cheaper, and awarded a $3 billion cost-plus contract. Under this contract, the costs continued to rise for various reasons. Later, toward the end of the contract, they entered into a fixed-price contract with Bechtel for around $4.9 billion. I am not sure that Bechtel did a very good job in building the plant. We also have had trouble with the coal we bought from Peabody. It seems to contain more rocks than we believed it would. This has contributed to several breakdowns." That was the chairman of the Board of Paducah Power System until yesterday, or day before yesterday, approximately 1:30 PM. Anybody got any comments on what he had to say?
Mark, Mark, you're an attorney.
Yes, I'm sorry.
They really can't comment on that.
Oh, I wish they would, because it's on the record, Mayor.
Well, because of the other groups that are in with Prairie State, it would compromise.
Well, I wouldn't wanna compromise anybody, but that was a good question.
You should understand that, you know.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark, you're pretty close.
Jay Campbell, please.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you for having me, and thank you all for coming. And most of what I have to say has probably already been said. It's one of the things about going forth, right? And only having three minutes, I'm just gonna read this real quick. My first question is kind of rhetorical for everyone. So what was so wrong with TVA, right? Sounds like we had a good, reliable source of power, and we're just a little bit off, right? Okay, so, a couple of things I thought of while you guys were giving your presentation. You have a lot of coal, you're not using it right now as much. Could you sell that coal? Right, is there something impeding you from selling coal? Maybe to recover transportation and facilities, or-
No, it's in the permit that we can only burn that coal.
Okay, good to know, that was just, I mean, just a thought, right? You've got coal, and maybe you could sell it, make some money back, or whatever. Okay, so, you said it was hard to guess how low our rates might stabilize, or how low the PCA might eventually go, once everything comes to fruition? Of everyone in the world who might be able to guess whether that PCA is gonna go? You guys are probably the most qualified to know that. So could you maybe guess for us? I mean, what, if we stick with this, we go with this, and our community gets behind this, and we stick with Prairie State, and everything's happy and wonderful, how good could it get? What's the upside? Somebody, please, tell me some, lie to me. Tell me something. I know, I know, but I mean, you can understand what I'm asking, right?
The only thing I say, the upside would be better than it is now.
Well, okay, that shouldn't be too hard, though, but I appreciate, I appreciate that, right? To that, right, it's something that somebody else mentioned, right? You talked about E4s improving, and higher ROIs, and, it sounds like you have some great balance sheets that are coming in a couple of years, and that'll be great, but we can't burn your balance sheets this winter, when it's cold, and we're trying to heat our houses, and, I mean, this is, you're causing hardship for a lot of people. So, I mean, that's, that's a bummer. Let's try to fix that, right? We don't, we don't need these rates to be this high. It's causing real problems for real people. So one of the things I thought of was maybe that Paducah Power could mitigate this problem by using some of those $30 million cash reserves by using some of those $30 million cash reserves that, uh, Mark Bryant just talked about. Maybe they could pay our PCA for a little while. I don't know how long that $30 million would last, and I understand there's some issues with spending that down. It affects their credit rating and that kind of thing. Chances are good PPS isn't going to be buying any more stuff, big stuff, so their credit rating maybe isn't so important. But if they could pay that down, is that even a possibility? Is that even in the realm of possible? I'll leave that as rhetorical. You guys can answer that later, but PPS has a little bit of money. You could help us out there.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer that.
Okay.
But most of that money is associated with bonding requirements, sinking funds, and reserve requirements of, associated with the debt, so.
Right.
I don't believe that option is there without risk to, uh, our credit rating, for sure.
Our credit rating as Paducah City, or as Paducah Power?
Paducah Power.
Okay, well, I'm not, again, I'm not so worried about their credit rating, but, I mean, I understand. Other people are, so. Um, well, for real, we just, we need the power to be cheaper. Um, okay, last, getting to the end here, sorry, I'm coming up on three minutes, I'm sure. Uh, the PPS contract to purchase power requires us to pay, even if, even if you all don't produce at full level. Um, how long does that go on? How long can we wait for you all to come to the appropriate level of production before we end up realizing what a terrible deal? I mean, as somebody spoke to what a bad deal it was, that we have to pay for something we're not getting, and I get that, that's how contracts are done, and I understand those, those issues within your industry. But at some point, you're not making enough power for us. We've got to go do something else, right?
I can answer that. I mean, we have to pay, take a pay contract, is then effective till the bonds are paid off.
In perpetuity, until the bonds are paid off, and it is what it is. Okay. Is that, I mean, we're on board with that. Okay, so, lastly.
Hey, Jay.
Jay, three minutes.
Three and a half.
Oh, okay. Bail Onkempa, bail on PPS, the same thing he just said, right? What, what he just said was not a bad thought. I don't want to bankrupt anything. I want Paducah Power. I want Paducah people being happy, buying Paducah Power, and everybody paying cheap rates, but let's not be afraid to think out of the box. That was a good idea.
Okay, next, we have Jeff Parsley. He lives on Maywood Drive.
Uh, my name is Jeff Parsley. I actually worked for TVA for 34 years, and the last two or three, I was running all of TVA's coal plants. So, uh, I've got a couple of quick technical questions, and then just a couple of other things. So, uh, what's the non-fuel dollars per megawatt hour cost on this plant? I noticed that wasn't there. You made a big deal out of the fuel cost, but what's the non-fuel O&amp;M cost? Okay, that's all right. I mean, you ought to know it right off the top of your head. What's the ash content of the coal? 25%, right? Yeah. What's the ash fusion temperature of the coal? Of that particular coal? And is it the good ash fusion, right ash fusion temperature for that boiler? And where is the slag? Nose arch, screen walls? I mean, I'm just, that?
The slag is independence.
It was independence? Okay. Uh, was this plant built with quite a bit of gray market material? I know the boiler would be considered gray market. How about other stuff? Pulverizers, pumps, feed pumps? Well, that was a lot of gray market material bought from other plants, because all the other coal plants in the country were getting canceled during this time. But if we did save a lot of money on the boiler, it's a good thing, because no telling how much more it would have went over budget. Uh, so, is it true? Well, I know it's true. So, we buy all this power at whatever the rate is. Let's just say it's $80 a megawatt, right now, because of poor performance. But it all gets sold on the market, right? At the closest hub to the plant, every bit of it. It all gets sold on the market. Like, today, the market was about $30. So, you buy an $80 power, you're selling it for $30, you lose it. And then you go out and buy power at the market price at the MISO hub in Indiana, right? So, we're buying $80 power, we're selling it for $30 or $2 in the middle of the night, losing $50 a megawatt, and then turn around and buying what our needs are. So, we're buying high, selling low. Is that pretty?
No, we, 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 we take the power and we liquidate it at the nearest hub.
Right.
Correct. We buy it at K-U-L-G interface.
Right.
And we have ARRs, known as auction revenue rights, that we hold, and we provide those in the financial transmission rights, so we're able to mitigate quite a bit.
But we're losing money about every day, though, right? On our sales. And if the plant, if our portion of the megawatts of that plant are, say, 70, because it's not performing good, we can sell the 70, but we also got to buy the other difference between that and 112 megawatts, or whatever. So, we're buying that, we don't even have it to sell, right?
Well, uh, when you look at a power plant, you look at dispatch costs.
I know. I know, that's all variable.
Dispatch costs is quite a lot of that.
That's all variable cost, but, but your fixed costs are really high, and that's the cost of capacity. That's why the dollars per megawatt hour O&amp;M cost would be really high. Is it true that when, when you were with TVA, TVA served as the regulator, right?
Yes.
TVA regulated how much you could charge for power. Now, there are, is no regulation, right? You can sell really whatever you can.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, so.
You have to wrap it up.
Okay, I'm wrapping it up, real quick. So, one thing that really stuck with me, because you said up here, Dave, that we didn't really ever say that the power rates would be cheaper in TVA, we would be competitive. So, you know, in my best Columbo look, I'm thinking, man, did they nearly just say that? Because we've got a plant here in Paducah that has a $30 million payroll, employs 350 people, not to mention outage people and construction workers and all that, spends all kinds of money in the community, but we decided we wanted to risk $600 million of this, of the ratepayers' money in issuing bonds, so we could be competitive with what we already had. I just want to make sure that I understood that. And the la, the last thing, Mr. Soderbergh, uh, in the words of Abraham Lincoln, a lot of your facts were right, it's just your conclusion was wrong.
Okay, uh, looks like I have a neighbor here tonight. Vicki, you live at 317 North 9th. How are you tonight?
I'm good, but not so good. Okay, mine is more personal. I'm not an electrical engineer. I'm not a mechanical engineer, but I am a nurse. And I worked three jobs last winter, because I had a power bill, $900. My mortgage is nearly $1,000. So, with two bills, I paid nearly $2,000. I'm a single mother with two children, and I'm going to tell you what I'm going to do. Since I don't have a plan, if I lose my house, if me and my children have to go move in with my parents, I will seek a lawyer, and I will sue. That's all. And if, and if, if they can't fix the problem, why can't the citizens of Paducah go to Jackson Purchase? Why can't we choose our provider? We have to. Can somebody answer that?
Uh, it's all to do with who owns the lines.
Well, what do we have to do to revise the lines?
Uh, Dave, do you want to speak to that?
I don't know how that could practically be done.
Well, there's a lot of things that's not practical tonight.
We don't have deregulation in Kentucky. Just say that.
Okay. Would you say that again?
We do not have deregulation in Kentucky.
So, therefore, where Paducah Power serves, people are bound to buy that, from that. You don't have an option. Okay, well, I had friends that had homes. They gave up their homes and they moved in apartments. I am a nurse. I make very good money, but there is no reason why I should have to give up what I bought at 20 years old, because I can't afford the power this winter. Think about it.
And I just want to, Vicki, I just want to say that I've known her a long time, and I know how she has worked hard to get her education. I met you and your daughter at an event, how many years ago? Four now? And, uh, you know, I have to vouch for this young woman and her tenacity, and her perseverance, and what she has accomplished in her life.
What's her name?
And, um, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
I am not surprised.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeff Parker. Good evening.
I come to you as a Paducah Power customer, residential customer, also a small business owner that has Paducah Power, and also sitting on the Board of McCracken County Board of Let me echo what's already been said. We don't have time. I mean, next spring, when the housing market comes about, when you go to buy a new piece of property, what's the first thing you do? You go get the utility rates. Who would buy a house or a business that was on Paducah Power and have jacked-up rates that you can't afford to move into? And I, I understand what that young lady was saying. I was at the Paducah Power Board meeting yesterday. Mark, did, did your people show up? Did anybody from Paducah Power show up today, off the board? He, he had people show up that, that has taken a look at all this, and he offered assistance at no charge, right? And, and shame on you guys, Paducah Power, for not taking him up on it, because that, that would not have cost you a penny. Uh, it's been a dr, we need to address the situation this winter for the elderly and the people like that young lady. They won't be able to pay their power bills. And we need to do it quick. You don't need to take time, because we don't have time. We don't have the two to three years. We don't have six months. We have to address it now. Whatever mistakes have been made, it, it really doesn't matter now. We're at a point where we have to fix it. I ask you to consider changing the power board. We have no county residents. You have that in your power. I'm sure. You don't.
No.
Why?
Uh, because of the state statutes that regulates who I can appoint to the board. They can only be city residents. That's something, if you win the election, we need to work on.
I didn't want to bring politics into this, but I'll be more than happy to.
We have to work with our state legislators to get that.
And, and it, it also appalls me that.
Wait a minute, let me.
Okay.
Because I firmly believe that it needs to, the statute needs to say, within the service area, not just within the city of Paducah.
And I agree. And, and I wonder where some of our legislators are tonight, I really do. Last but not least, you had, uh, the Chairman of the Board step down yesterday. You have, in your ability to appoint another person, uh, you better find somebody like Mr. Parsley, because I'm not knocking their board, and I'm not knocking your Chairman of Paducah Power. But I was at that meeting, and they, I don't think they know a whole lot about what's going on, or how it's going on, and that's how we've got in the situation we're in. So, you have your ability to, to put someone in there that does know the power business, and, and we really need to, to strive on that. And, uh, last but not least, I kind of feel sorry for the guys that are working for Paducah Power, that get honked at, and pop birds, and everything else, and, uh, we, we, we really have to bring this to, to a head, because they're, they're taking a beating out there, and they have nothing to do with, with what's going on, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say that, um, I, I did call State Representative Watkins. He was very helpful to me, introduced me to a fine gentleman that I met with today, who was very helpful with, uh, with a lot of, uh, issues that we're going through. So, thank you, John. Uh, Bill Ford?
Bill has a lead.
Ronald Wood, is it Wood? Ward, Ronald Ward?
I, I come to you.
Is it Ward or Wood?
Ward.
Ward, all right.
Well, Mayor, you know, I've been coming here since March. There's only one here, and I'm glad y'all are finally taking an active role, trying to do something about this. I'm glad the news media is finally showing here, and I'm glad we had a huge crowd here tonight. And basically, what I'm going to talk about is something a little bit different, but very pertinent, the situation. They finally put their annual report on the, um, internet, okay? So, I've been analyzing the annual report. Before this started, back in 2012, uh, the rate was around 9.2% per kilowatt, 9.2 cents per kilowatt. Now, it's 13.303. And, uh, you, part of it is, they're over-capacitized. They're looking at 120 kilowatts they're supposed to buy from, uh, Prairie State, plus they've got this peaking plant out here at over 100, plus, I don't know what that's costing, they're, they committed to buy 15 from that dam up at Smithland. And so, on their debt load, on that peaking plant alone, now, last year, uh, they paid $13,240,000 principal and interest. Between now and 2038, on the peaking plant alone, they've got a total interest and debt interest and principal due of $273 million. I mean, irregardless of whether, what the rates are going to be, the debt load is going to kill them. Then they've got around $440 million of KMPA debt, and it's at a high interest rate, 6.02%. But if their Moody's doesn't, if they don't change their position, they lost $1.7 million last year. Even if you read the Black and Beach Report, they're not even predicting to make a profit this year in 2014. They're only predicting to make profits from 2015 on down the road. They're liable to be downgraded, which they won't even be able to finance those bonds they're talking about at 6.02%. So, I mean, I'm just saying, irregardless of the race, I'm probably going to have a different thing, the debt is going to kill them. The, the $440 million of KMPA bonds are just fixing to amortize in 2013 and forward, and that's another 25-year debt. And the only other thing I was going to say is, I got to studying, and the ladies from Princeton Powers here, apparently, I don't know how they're, but their rates are lower than ours. I don't know what they're doing to manage their situation so well. According to their website, their rate is point 11, 11.298, when ours is 13.303. They're in the same boat they are, we are, but their rates are 20% lower. I mean, I wonder what they're doing right, that we're doing wrong, being in the same situation.
Ron, three minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay, we have Mary Lamble. Is that right, Mary Lamble?
Yeah, I was going to talk about trash cans along the Greenway Trail. There's a lot of trash out there. It's different every day. Somebody's obviously picking it up. I've met two women who pick it up in trash bags and take it home with them. There are signs that say, "Leave no trace," but there's no way to leave no trace. I've asked one of the park rangers about putting trash cans out. He talked to JP Roberts, who said, "We think they'll be vandalized, somebody will burn the trash cans up." There are so many people on the trail these days. I don't think that's going to happen. But if we remove trash cans the first of December, and don't put them back out to the first of March, I think that'll help that situation, because it'll be heavily used between March and, uh, December. I'm only asking for three trash cans at specific locations. One of them is on the dyke, near the Campbell Street entrance. That can be chained to the, um, shelter with the benches. One at Noble Park, just above the skate park. There are two trash cans at the skate park. If we just move one of those up to the top of the dyke, where all three trails meet, I think it would be so convenient. I can't take trash on my bike. I don't have a way to do it, and if I've got four and a half miles to ride, I won't be picking up trash unless I know there's a trash can up ahead that I can throw it in. And most of the people that walk along that trail are the type of people who would throw the trash in the trash can if it was convenient. Another one, between the gravel at Noble Park and the beginning of Stuart Nelson Park, is a very long stretch. That's the part that's most vandalized of anything, but we could use one trash can somewhere along there. And then, in addition, um, I'd like one recycle bin. I've talked to Merle Paschag at GPS. He's willing to man it. The best place is going to be at the, um, two benches and shelter nearest the tunnel, because that's just behind GPS, and there's an access road that goes right to North 8th Street, and he said he'd take care of it.
Well, Mary?
And it just as a trial, just to see would we collect enough, because I see a lot of cans and bottles on the trail.
I know, I, I can tell you've given it a lot of thought, and it is a beautiful Greenway Trail. Do you mind if I have Mark Thompson call you and talk with you about this?
Oh, yeah, that'd be fun.
Got your number here.
Okay, yeah.
I'll have Mark call you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, the, these are all the people that signed up to speak. Any other comments? Well, I appreciate everyone coming here today. I know that the only reason, just, just a mo, okay, sure.
How many months are we going to endure the current cost of electricity? How many months, how many do you predict? One, three, and what, what, four years? What's it on?
I think that's been a question we've, we've all asked, and hope for an answer too soon.
Well, I thought you said 2018 is when they.
Well, stabilizing, yes.
Uh, when we, when we are delinquent with the agreement of our bill, how many months do we have before you shut off the power? None? How many days? Please answer, Paducah Power. How long? How long can I be delinquent? Anybody got it now? It's a hundred and fifty. A dog's house, and I'm not one of them. So, there really isn't an answer there?
Well, I don't have that answer for you tonight.
The power company does, okay? They don't have one there.
I don't think they do either.
May I tell you, should I people off?
Well, I mean, we're all up there with you, my power bill was $683 this month, and that's, and that's tough. And I turned my thermostat up to 77, and it was still that, so, you know, we're all, we all understand what's going on here, it's probably the most serious problem for Paducah since the Great Flood. It really is. Jeff?
If I could, Mayor, I got some figures together today, and my wife told me not to say anything, but I've been in trouble before with her, and the city last year, your power bill was somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.7 million for the city of Paducah. And now, we're gonna increase it by a third, who's paying for it? Me, and everybody else in this room, the taxpayers. Baptist Health, $3.7 million. I guess Hugh Man is picking that bill up. All I really have to say, I don't think Mr. Peabody's coal train stopped in Mullenburg County, I think it rolled through McCracken and took us to the cleaner, is what I think.
Okay, well, thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you, Mark, for agreeing to work with Paducah Power, and I think Hardy has some good ideas for some extra help with Paducah Power, which I think is gonna be real positive. So, thank you, we'll continue our meeting. Commissioner Abraham, do you want to go on with the minutes?
I will.
Let's move on.
I'll just hang on a second.
Let's go on.
Richard, let's go on.
Just go ahead, okay. I move that the reading of the minutes for September 16, 2014, City Commission Meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, I don't have a Board of Adjustment. That's you.
Oh, I'm supposed to read it first.
It's okay.
No, I don't, I don't have one at all.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint William Baxter as a member of the Board of Adjustment. This term will expire August 31, 2018.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint.
Is that not right?
William Baxter? There's only one appointment?
Okay, I don't say something about Mayor Kayler's reappointment? William Baxter, as member of Board Adjustment, this term will expire August 31, 2018.
Second.
Oh, I should've had you read this page, sorry.
Okay, but I just, but I just relax.
Yeah, I didn't understand what you were talking about.
Just, we're all good, okay.
I just thought you were talking about reappointment, but the name's right.
Good?
Good.
Can we call the roll?
Yes.
Can we vote?
I get a second.
You did.
You guys have me all confused now.
You got a second, you're good, call the roll.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay, I move the following documents be received and filed, documents, certificates of liability, insurance, Tabor Crane Construction Services, Fallen Electric Company, Mertco Incorporated, Hefflin Incorporated, Commissioners' Deeds, 1131 Tinsley Street and 1234 North 12th Street. Notice of Cancellation of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah for September 9, 2014, Owens Property, 5065 Concord Avenue, a settlement of agreement and release between City of Paducah, Allstate Insurance Company, and Betty Owens, and a quitclaim deed. Number five, contracts for services, Yizer Art Center, Paducah Symphony Orchestra, Luther F. Carson Four River Center Incorporated. Number six, West Kentucky Community and Technical College Television Department Annual Report for July 2013, June 2014. Number seven, Paducah Water Works Financial Highlights for July 2014. And eight, transcript of proceedings for City of Paducah, Kentucky Taxable General Obligation Bonds Refunding Bonds Series 2014B Police and Firefighters Pension Fund, $4,222,000.
Second. Okay, we have a resolution tonight?
We need to vote.
Oh, yes, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Quick.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, Paducah Power Electric Plant Board called to action. Whereas the Electric Plant Board was formed by the Little TVA Act of 1942, and the board has a separate governance structure with board members appointed by the mayor of Paducah and approved by the Board of Commissioners, and whereas our community depends on abundant, reliable, and affordable power, and whereas for several months, the citizens of McCracken County who depend on Paducah Power for services have expressed great concern over rising power costs associated with the unreliability of the Prairie State Campus Generation Facility, and whereas the community demands action from Paducah Power System to find a solution to the rising rates of electricity and to secure our community's future, and whereas the mayor has contacted, the mayor has contacted the Kentucky Attorney General, the Secretary of Energy, and members of the Congressional delegation to express our community's concern, and whereas the Electric Plant Board discussed at its September 22, 2014 meeting, steps to investigate current fiscal responsibilities, look at cost-cutting measures, and conduct a process to select a new general manager. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, Section 1, that the Board of Commissioners strongly urge the Electric Plant Board to do the following on the behalf of our city and its citizens. Hire an independent expert to investigate the information on which the decision to invest in the Prairie State Campus was made. Hire an expert in utility matters to investigate current financial obligations. Promptly proceed with process currently underway to hire a search firm to assist in the recruitment and selection of a successor to the retiring Paducah Power System General Manager. Enhance and communicate to the public attainable programs to help customers with current bills created from recent power cost adjustments. And consider and provide opportunities for the community to become a full and open partner in determining the fate of our community and the Paducah Power System. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption.
I need a second, please.
Second.
Mayor, after listening to their report tonight, can we have discussion?
Sure.
After listening to their report tonight, and I know that they're a separate corporate entity run by their power board, but could we honestly feel like we should change that word "strongly urge" to just "demand"?
Is it a strongly word?
It says "strongly urge."
Oh, I thought it was gonna be "demand." Demand that they do this.
I really feel that way, because I don't feel like I got answers tonight about when we might get a change, and I just feel like "strongly urge" leaves that little bit of wiggle room for them, and I really feel like it's our responsibility to protect the citizens and our businesses and our community, and since we don't have direct authority over it, we could at least, from us, say we demand that they take some of the steps.
Well, a couple of things, I agree with you, and tonight, those folks that were watching at home, and folks were asking me, you know, exactly what was gonna happen tonight, we had two groups, we had two separate conversations. The Prairie State guys, they really couldn't tell you when that facility would be uprunning at full capacity, 85 percent. They couldn't tell you, because there's too many variables in there. The other conversation was the, what you just read, the responsibility of Paducah Power, making the decision to leave TVA, which currently has turned out to be a horrible decision, and accountability for that decision. The board, the chairman of the boards resigned, the only other person on that board, I believe that was on that board when the decision was made, is Mr. Clark. So, you make decisions, there's consequences for them. Now, it doesn't do anything about our rates, because we're still having to, you know, endure those, but I think demand would be appropriate.
I believe these actions would at least help us to understand and help them to push for answers quicker.
Anything we can do, I think we should do to help.
I just feel like it's the strength of the city, we should say we demand that they take these actions.
Do you want to change this?
I do.
I second that, if that's appropriate.
Do I need to read it again?
No, you just want to amend the resolution. You want to amend the resolution to stray demand in Section 1 and citizen's urge.
You know, I attended their board meeting yesterday, and I think they're, and Jeff, I mean, you can speak to this better than I can, I do think the board is really struggling with what to do. As Mr. McLennan's gone, and none of them were present when the decision, none of the board members that are left are present when the decision's made, they understand, I truly believe that current board members understand the dilemma, but I think they're struggling with what to do, how, where to even start. You know, you have a conversation with Tuffy Roberts, the newly elected chair, and I know we've discussed it with Jeff and Mark Workman, who's been there less than a month, and I did not talk to Mr. Jones, but they're, I think they just don't know, they have a set of steps, obviously, some of those are outlined there, but, and we have no control over them, obviously, you know, we're just, we want something done on behalf of the citizens, but...
But I, after my discussion with Tuffy Roberts?
Right.
I felt like he is willing to make changes?
I agree, I agree.
And he is going to address those as quickly as he can, and I think the strength of the city demanding that these changes be made will help to speed that up.
Well, it starts with the first step.
I agree.
And yesterday was the first step, because I don't believe we would be making these changes under previous leadership, so I'm, a new board chair, I think should help, would help set that, and I know by state statute, Jeff represents the city on that board, and I feel like that he can help them to understand how important this is, and it is an issue that's going to just...
The only concern I have about that, and I fully understand where you're coming from on that, but, at the end of the day, Paducah Power has to be financially solvent, it has to meet its debt obligations, and financially, if it were possible to lower rates, if it had been yesterday, we would have, so, the expectation that we do that, demanding we take those steps is one thing, but the expectation from the demand that a rate increase happen from that, I don't know necessarily that, that that can happen within a certain period of time. I think of all the factors, it's my belief, my read, that of all the factors that could allow that to happen, that the Prairie State efficiency attainment of 85 percent, give or take whatever, was said tonight, is it. And I think you got about as good a read on that as is possible tonight, without getting a guarantee. What you got is assertion and assurance that the effort was being made, and, you know, certain changes have been made up there, but that is one thing that, what Paducah Power Board can do is hold people's feet to the fire, Prairie State, the accountability thing, but that doesn't necessarily mean that mechanical issues unforeseen might not still happen for a period of time.
I think they need to look at all steps, Jeff, there are other things that could be done. I don't have a copy of it in front of me, if that needs, is there a thing, a statement, did it say "demand them lower the cost immediately," or it was to strive for it, isn't it?
Well, and I think that's what...
That needs to be, that word needs to be added.
I'm not sure how that was gonna be worked in, maybe we just need to figure out where that goes.
I think I have a copy on my phone.
The Board of Commissioners, "Demand that the Electric Plant Board, demand the Electric Plant Board do the following," is the way it would read.
And...
Instead of "strongly urge," "demand," and that's hire an independent expert to investigate the information on which the decision to invest in Prairie State Campus was made, hire an expert in utility matters to investigate current financial obligations, promptly proceed with process currently underway to hire a search firm for the general manager. So, that's where the word "demand" would go in.
I'm comfortable with that.
And then she's gonna make that change.
Okay, first, we need to vote on the amendment. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
Wait just a moment.
Have to vote on another one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we want to vote on the resolution as amended, and adopt it as, the resolution as amended. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
It's my turn.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Hi, Steve.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Any questions, most notably, three police officer, new hires tonight, I think we still have about four to fill, and that's, that's in process, going through interviews, so there'll be, there'll be another batch coming forward, hopefully, and I think, I think you got their biographical information of the...
They looked very impressive.
The three new hires, yes. Email officer coming on board, too.
Saw that.
Okay, Commissioner Abraham, please. Oh, we have to vote on that?
Yes, we do.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the application for a grant in the amount of $5,000 to the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for the Pauline Memorial Education Grant for bicyclists and pedestrian safety be adopted.
Second. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor and Commission, this is for a after-school program and then the start of some bicycle safety within our community over the next fiscal year. We're still working on some of the, the things that we're actually gonna be doing with the grant, but generally, that's what it's for. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Schools on, schools on board, gonna have some bike racks, a few things like that, if they're gonna ride to school?
It's gonna be, what we're looking at now is more of an educational component for after-school programs.
Are they gonna, I mean, are they, are the school boards behind it, they're cool with having some bike racks and some place to chain your bike down?
We have not gotten to that at this point.
All right.
Let me call the roll.
City Clerk?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky Department of Housing, Buildings and Construction, Division of HVAC, and the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor hereby authorized to execute an agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky Department of Housing, Buildings and Construction, HVAC Division, and the City of Paducah, Kentucky. The city shall assume primary plan review, inspection and enforcement responsibility under 815 KAR 7120, the Kentucky Building Code, 815 KAR 7125, the Kentucky Residential Code, and other applicable law for initial HVAC installations and major repairs or substantial alterations to an HVA system within the geographical boundaries of the City of Paducah. Said jurisdiction is limited to HVA systems installed in buildings over which the City of Paducah has jurisdiction pursuant to KRS 198B 060. This agreement is, this agreement is for a term of three years, however, it may be canceled as described in KRS 198B 6673 and 815 KR 8100.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Mr. Wilson, please.
Nope, I'm next, uniforms.
You're next.
I move that, spam, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the change order number four with Bluegrass Uniforms Incorporated for Uniforms for the Fire Department Employees, and authorizing the mayor to execute said order, said change order. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah, Kentucky hereby approves and accepts change order number four with Bluegrass Uniforms Incorporated to update and add items to the original contract along with additional items that have been discontinued by the manufacturer.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc. for the Community Scholarship Program. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Junior College, Inc. in the amount of $125,000 for the Community Scholarship Program. This contract shall expire June 30, 2015.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Barclay Regional Airport for providing general aviation and air carrier services. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Barclay Regional Airport in the amount of $136,430 payable in quarterly installments of $34,107.50 each for providing general aviation and air carrying services to the citizens of McCracken County and surrounding regions. This contract shall expire June 30, 2015.
Second. Thank you. We've discussed all this earlier, so... City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt, please.
I don't have another one.
One we're taking off.
I thought that's...
Oh, that's the one we're taking off. All right.
We still have to, um...
Do we have to do something for that?
We do.
If you would read.
Yes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance, an ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration of the Code of Ordinances.
Yes, we have to put the motion on the floor first.
Of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, this ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby amends the ordinance in Chapter 2 of the Paducah Code of Ordinances by deleting the residency requirement to serve on the Paducah McCracken County River Port Authority.
Second.
Okay. Does that mean you're removing the residency requirement?
Well, we're just putting it on the floor. Now we need someone to make a motion to table it.
I'll make, okay. Do I need to make that motion? I make the motion to table it.
Okay, here it is.
Second.
I'll say, I say the motion.
Get forward, you guys.
I move that an ordinance introduced on September 16th, 2014, do we need to vote on that first, before I read this?
No, she just made the motion, so you're reading it for her.
Okay. I move, I move that an ordinance introduced on September 16th, 2014, and entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah be tabled. Second.
Well, you guys have already first.
Okay, good.
Now I just need to call the roll. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
We're done.
All right, we have city managers report?
I have nothing.
Okay. Any other mayor or commissioner comments?
Nope.
Got a great barbecue festival coming up.
Kicks off with pork stock, which is actually not part of the, it's a private ticketed event, but anyone can still purchase tickets, I believe, there are a few still left. And then Thursday morning at 11 o'clock, it starts.
Dragon Boat Festival was fun last week.
Great crowd.
It was.
Great crowd.